Okay. Call to order. Uh, this is our uh, city council meeting, August eighteenth, six P M, uh, six oh, no big deal. Roll call, city clerk?
Councilmember Greeno?
Here.
Councilmember Tinkler?
You see mine?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wright?
Here.
And Mayor Altman?
Here. Please join me for the budget late hits.
Thank you very much, everyone. Welcome this evening. Before we do anything else, uh, we have a special presentation from the city manager.
Sir. Thank you, uh, Mayor Altman, members of the council. Uh, this agenda item is a, is a tough one because it's a loss, uh, for our community. And with that, we can go ahead and start the, the presentation. Uh, Mr. Patch, that'd be great. So recently, um, we lost, uh, one of the, uh, one of the, the Hall of Famers for the city. Uh, his name was Gil Estrada. He was the, uh, he was the city mechanic from nineteen seventy-eight. He was hired by Mike Young and retired in two thousand and eleven. So over thirty-two years of dedicated service to the city. But for me, the story doesn't, doesn't start there with Gil. Uh, Gil was, was quite the person, and I'll tell a little bit about his, his journey here. Uh, but I first met Gil when I was five years old, and, uh, he happened to be my, uh, my best friend's dad. And he, um, he was, he was an amazing person as, uh, as I was growing up watching him. But it wasn't until I became older that I, that I fully understood how, how great of a man he really was. So Gil's story, uh, didn't start here in Crescent City. It actually started in the Azores. And he came, uh, with apparently about a thousand dollars, uh, to his name. Uh, his wife was pregnant at the time, but he wanted to come to America to live the American dream. Didn't know how to speak English, got a job at Torgerson Ford, uh, where he ended up going to night classes and learned English and, uh, and became an American citizen. Uh, shortly thereafter, he met a man by the name of Nick Gargadis, who was the, uh, who was an employee here at the city and, and ran the shop. And Nick said, we like what, we like what you're doing here. We want you to work for the city. That was nineteen seventy-eight. Thirty-two and a half years later, he retired as a city employee. Uh, things were not easy back then for the city either. He, uh, he had to make do with tight budgets and, uh, they didn't have the parts and, you know, it was, it was a different time. And so you needed the, the skilled mechanics. But the other thing that I learned from Gil and, you know, all the way on from that, from that early age is that he loved this city. I mean, it just oozed out of him. He was proud to be a city employee and anybody that ever met him, either from the time that you, uh, that he was there at the shop or if, uh, you met him on a, on a day out in the street, the first thing he'd do when he came into the city hall, he'd say, hey, money, you know who this is, right? This is, this is Gil Estrella. I worked for the city for thirty-two years, right? That was the first thing I just oozed with, uh, oozed with pride. And, uh, and Gil will, uh, will be remembered fondly by all of us that, uh, that knew him for sure. Here's a, here's a couple of pictures of Gil. So Gil also is a devout Catholic and, uh, and, uh, very religious, uh, person. Uh, here's a shot of him and Buddy Hoffman. So it's a little bit hard to see in this picture, but those are actually, uh, those are rebar. Uh, it's a rebar cage that they built. And from my understanding, that is the rebar cage that was put in the ground up Peterson Park for the sports lights that were up there. So that was Gil, uh, right there, Gil and Bud. There's actually a sign right below. It's too bad it's not in this picture. It says, don't feed the animals on it, but. Uh, here's Gil and, uh, with a shot of all the, all the guys he worked with right before he retired. So there's the man, the myth, the legend there in blue, along with some other, uh, city greats standing beside him. Uh, and then here's a shot of Gil doing what, doing what he loved, uh, each and every day, coming to the, uh, coming to the city and, and, uh, making sure that the emergency equipment was running and, and doing what he could to, to save the city money and keep this community running. Uh, but Gil, uh, Gil will certainly be missed by all of us that were so fortunate to, uh, to know him and to know the type of person he was, the type of dedication. I mean, if you could, if you could replicate that in, uh, in every city employee, you would want nothing more. I'll tell you that. And so it's with a, a somber heart and a, uh, and deepest condolences to, uh, to his family, uh, as Gil. The other thing he would tell you, not only his time with the city, but Gil would always speak about his family. He was very much a, a family person, absolutely loved his, uh, his wife, his kids, right? That's all they ever talked about until he had grandkids. And then, you know, step aside kids, right? It's grandkids time and, and you would certainly hear about all their accomplishments and all the wonderful things that they were doing. So with that, uh, Gil, you will be missed and, uh, but certainly not forgotten by all of us.
Thank you, city manager, Weir. So at this time, I will ask everyone to join us in, uh, a moment of silence, uh, in remembrance of this great man, Gil Estrella. Thank you, everyone, and, uh, thank you for that presentation. Telling you, Eric, you could do the best tear jerkers. Okay, so at this time, I'm asking the city attorney, do we have anything to report out from closed session?
We do. Um, this evening during closed session, uh, a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Wright, cited in by councilmember Tinkler, and carried unanimously, four to zero, was a motion to reject the government claims of Jeremy Jensen, Samantha Agiri, Scott Cook, and Reginald Montoya.
Thank you so much. Okay, um, at this time, I've got to read the public comment, uh, period rules. So any member of the audience is invited to address the city of Crescent City on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. All comments shall, shall be directed for the entire council. Any comments that are not at the podium or the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from the mayor, please state your name and city or county residency for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes. The public is additionally allotted three minutes each in which to speak on any item on the agenda prior to any action taken by the council. At this time, I would ask if the public has any comment at this time. Not seeing any public comment. Um, before I move on to the consent calendar, um, I would like the council to consider pulling item six, which is, um, uh, the building inspector interim position. Um, we should pull that because it's not appropriate for consent calendar. And we will move that to the last item of new business this evening upon the council agreement. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, and before we go to consent, um, actually, I'll do it after consent. Uh, we're going to, if the council agrees, move the Sister City International World Expo event uh, up to, um, the very next item after consent calendar. All in agreement? Thank you. Okay, so consent calendar is number one warrants claim list, number two council meeting minutes, number three is payroll report, number four is budget adjustment to purchase mission control for Birch Ocean View Water Tank. Number five is quarterly cash and investments report as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent calendar.
Yes. Thank you. Sir, please pull the vote.
Councilmember Greeno?
Yes.
Councilmember Tinkler?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Altman?
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, so we're gonna.
Did we get public comment on that consent calendar?
Oh, do we have any public comment on the consent calendar? No public comment? Thank you, Attorney Rice. Okay, so, um, we're going to move item ten up to present time, Sister City International World Expo event. And we have a short staff report.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor Altman, members of the council. So this is another opportunity that having our sister city relationship is bringing to Crescent City. And this one, it's, this time it's on the world stage. And so with that, I will, uh, ask our new recreation and events director, Kelly, to, uh, to come up and briefly tell us about it.
Good evening, uh, mayor, members of the council. So as you all know, uh, the history of, um, uh, Sister Cities International, um, what's really cool is it was created by President Eisenhower in nineteen fifty-six. And his granddaughter is going to be at the World Expo speaking, um, during the Sister Cities International piece. Um, and you know, also know the, you know, the background with the, um, nine point one magnitude earthquake that followed with a tsunami here in, uh, Delante County years later. Um, we are excited that Blake and Score is going to be a part of a group of twenty-nine local people that are going to travel to, uh, Japan in September to participate in the World Expo. And, um, as you also know, he was, he has been very involved in what has transpired here locally with the Komomi Festival and what we are doing for disaster relief, um, and preparedness for our youth. And what better person to represent the city of Crescent City than Mr. Inscore? Um, I have asked him to be here this evening to, um, talk about, uh, what his trip is going to be like. Um, it's an amazing opportunity. Uh, twenty-eight million people are expected to be at the World Expo during the six months that it is open. Um, ninety cities will be represented, uh, from, uh, California and approximately three hundred and seventeen attendees from California. Um, on this worldwide stage, Blake will be a guest speaker telling our story. And, um, it's, there's no telling what kind of an outcome that will have for our community. So with that being said, I will pass it on to Mr. Inscore.
Thank you, Kelly, mayor, council. It's an honor to be here this evening. Um, there's a, there's a lot of things that are happening in a relationship with the, the World Expo. This is, uh, we're looking at a hundred and seventy years of, of diplomatic relationships between the United States and, and the nation of Japan, which is pretty historic. Um, the eightieth, uh, anniversary of the bilateral, uh, relationship, uh, following, uh, World War Two. Seventy years of history of Sister Cities International. Uh, the State Department, in partnership with Sister Cities International and the, uh, the, the team that organized the World Expo, uh, decided that this was an opportunity to highlight the, the very strong and very key relationship between our two nations as something that could highlight the importance of world peace. Um, if our nations can do it, the essence is, is why, why can't the rest of us, uh, learn to do the same thing? Um, the State Department, uh, has specifically tasked Sister City International to, uh, to, uh, be to staff with young professionals, the, uh, the USA Pavilion at the Expo. And so Sister City International is coordinating, uh, coordinating that. Um, every U S, Japan, Sister City, uh, was specifically invited to, uh, attend, uh, the, uh, this event. Um, key words, um, memorialize and reaffirm the U S Japan friendship. Strengthen the bilateral partnerships and build new relationships. Rejuvenate the, uh, what is, we have discovered, um, sometimes Sister City relationships that are, that are hanging on a thread. That the only thing that's left is some students are going back and forth, but that's, that's what's left. Honor the citizen diplomats that have paved the way for a new paradigm in, um, diplomacy. Cultivate the next generation of leaders, explore economic development and participate, obviously, in the, in the Expo. Um, we have been tasked, uh, for the Sister City, um, uh, international portion of the Expo, uh, to kick off the entire event. Um, and so other than the early things that get said, uh, we highlight the day one of the, uh, of the Sister City International. Um, their board selected our story between us and Rikas and Takata as the way to communicate, uh, their hope for all sister cities, uh, around the world. Um, and so that's, that's why we're going. Um, it's a, it's a, it's a real honor to, to, to do that. Our story is unlike anything that anybody else, uh, really has. Um, but as I have said for many years, um, i- it's not about us. It's, it's about what we have done with the opportunity that we were given. We, you know, and it all started with students. Uh, maybe the most exciting part of this is, well, I, I may be a keynote speaker. The, the highlight of our presentation is going to be when I get the opportunity to introduce Haley DeArmond, who was one of the first students who actually went in two thousand and fourteen after the boat. Um, that alone speaks volumes about the legacy that, that we're building, that we have a young adult now who says, I want to give back, I want to take the time off, I want to go and be a part of this. Uh, in addition, during the trip, that's the sixteenth through the nineteenth, during the trip, after we arrive in Tokyo, we will make our way north. We will be going to the Iwate, Iwate Prefecture, um, uh, government to meet with, uh, uh, Governor Tasso. He was governor when they were there in two thousand and fourteen and, and Haley was part of that delegation that met him. And so, um, being able to, to close this loop in, in that sense, uh, we'll spend time in Rikas and Takata and then make our way back down to Osaka for the, uh, for the summit. Um, I'm very excited about the, the opportunities. I have to be honest with you, I wasn't really excited about making a trip right now. It's not a convenient time when you're trying to retire and move. Um, but the Komomi Foundation Board felt very strongly that, that my voice there mattered. And I, I really couldn't argue with that because obviously I've told this story so many times and you guys have all heard me tell it. Um, so I appreciate the opportunity, honored to, uh, to represent the city. We're not asking for, for anything, um, to, from, from you as far as support in the sense of financially. Um, but we would certainly love to have your blessing to say, hey, yeah, Blake is here to represent, um, the city of Crescent City. Because while, uh, initially when we formed the Sister City International membership and, uh, it was Crescent City and Delante County, um, the Sister City membership now is Crescent City. It's not Crescent City and Delante County. It's, it's us. And, uh, so it's appropriate that we, um, because we're the members of Sister City International, have a, have a voice there. Uh, I would be happy to answer any questions that I could about that, but I do have one other potential ask for you, since I'm retiring and this was not something I'm gonna volunteer to do. Um, but in November of this year, there's going to be a special, uh, occasion, uh, to celebrate, uh, some new connectivity in, uh, the northern region of Japan and the Iwate Prefecture. After the, uh, the East Japan earthquake and tsunami destroyed a good portion of the coastline, uh, the rail line had never made it to Rikas and Takata. Um, you would always, you could go as far as Ichinoseki inland, and then you got on a bus for an hour and a half through the mountains. Kind of like riding one ninety-nine, very, very similar. Um, the J R line has now completed a, a line from Ichinoseki to Kessinuma on the coast, which is only about twelve miles south of Rikas and Takata. And Rikas and Takata really wants to celebrate this, and they would love to have somebody from Crescent City be there sort of for their ribbon cutting, whatever it is. I'm told that the, uh, the trip from Kessinuma to, um, to, uh, I mean, from Ichinoseki to Kessinuma is going to be in a dining car with all the bells and whistles and you're going to eat like kings and queens and, and they're making a really big deal about this because it is a big deal from a standpoint of all of a sudden having public access, uh, to the coast. Um, the dates of that, and I will, I will get these to, to Mr. Weir, to, uh, uh, Ms. Salon, is November eighth through the sixteenth. Um, and, uh, so anyway, if anybody is interested in that, it even says here that there will be in, an in-car experience that includes jazz and other music. So maybe one of your songs, mayor, I don't know. That might be exciting. Anyway, so they, I, I'll get the, I'll get that to staff so that if you, uh, any of you would like to have that experience, um, trying to hand things off from me has been a real challenge. Um, because you don't realize how indebted you are into something till you try to give it away. And I don't have a problem with hanging on to stuff. I just don't know how to give it away. So, um, anyway, if you have any questions, uh, I appreciate the opportunity to share with you tonight. I'd be happy to answer any, if you have any.
Any questions, council?
Um, well, I just really appreciate, as everyone, speaking for everyone, I think, um, all the things you've done to develop that relationship, the Sister City. I'm a little concerned, um, and I'm assuming in the background, you've been working on this, that we don't lose that connection when we lose you.
Oh.
And, uh, so I, yeah, that's a big concern to me, that we make sure we continue and grow. Um, my other question would be, I know you're not asking, uh, for any kind of, um, fiscal investment. Um, but maybe, uh, um, informally or even after this meeting, there's ways that, uh, individuals in Crescent City can, can support this delegation going these.
Absolutely. And actually, we're at twenty-seven, we had a couple that were not able to make the trip. But yeah, a- all the, the funding, we'll funnel through the Komomi Foundation so that we can do that. So if anybody wanted to contribute specifically, uh, to, to the, the cost for this, we are, we are granting, uh, a, uh, a partial stipend scholarship for, for Haley. Uh, Sister City International really kind of put, put the screws to us. We want one of them first kids figure it out. And so and, and when the ask was made, we didn't have to twist her arm, but we felt like as a board that we wanted to help her with that because she's making a big sacrifice, um, as a young person to make that trip. But the foundation, uh, is a, and we have an online, um, giving portal that, uh, appreciate, appreciate that ask, that questions.
Any other questions?
I, I don't have any questions, but Blake, I want to thank you so much for taking this on. I know that it comes at a time when you're wanting to wind down and, and not ramp up. So thank you so much for taking the time out of.
Yeah, a big part of this is, is, is Sister City International has been very intrigued and they want us to try to show how they're, how a sister city can also work together with government-to-government relationships. Because that's what most, many sister cities don't have. They don't have, they don't have a city council or a mayor or anybody else that's engaged with wanting to see this happen. And frankly, this is a, this is a win for us. Um, the, the, the exposure that we're gonna get, um, this will be, uh, could be potentially even greater than, than we got with the, with, uh, Komomi, the, the, the book, uh, the, the documentary because of the fact that, that we're going to be able to spend time with, um, corporate sponsors who are all at the Wared Expo, who are gonna want, want to ask questions and, and get taken, get their picture taken with Bill Steven and his hat because he was there from the beginning and Haley and, and I'm gonna let him take as many pictures with them as they possibly can. But it also provides opportunity for us to say, and by the way, we have an amazing place on the other side of the Pacific Ocean that, that you can visit and we're ready for you to come. And so that's part of the whole gig, as far as I'm concerned. It's part of the reason I think that, that I was allowed to, the opportunity to serve on the, the visitor bureau for all these years. And I'm still on the visitor bureau and this is gonna be my last big push for, for, for tourism a- as well for our community. Thank you, Jason, appreciate it. Thank you all, appreciate you. And thanks for moving, moving it up. Us old guys go to bed early.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you so much for representing the city on this.
Thanks, mayor.
You have the a well-earned respect as our representatives in all the past years, too.
Yeah. And, and just on a side note, you guys are doing a great job. You know, I still, obviously, people talk to me all the time and they see the things that are happening around our community. Uh, they, they see the building, they see the construction, th- they see the positive things that you guys are carrying on. And just as a, as a guy who's moving to Texas, because my wife lives there. Um, and it's probably appropriate. Um, thank you, thank you for carrying those things on. I, I just, I feel like the city's in good hands, not only with our fabulous staff, but council members who continue to engage for the good of this, this amazing place. Because they're doing a great job, I'm really proud of all of you, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item? All right. So you know, no further comment.
Mayor, I move that we authorize former council member slash mayor Blake and Score to represent the city council, uh, on September eighth through the twenty-first, twenty twenty-five at the U S Japanese Sister City World Expo in Osaka, Japan, and all associated activities.
And I'll second that.
Clerk?
Councilmember Greeno?
Yes.
Councilmember Tinkler?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Altman?
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Okay. So let's go to continuing business. We have, uh, item seven is the North Pole Protection Letter of Support. And, uh, we're gonna hear a short presentation from, um, Grant, uh, Wehr School of the Smith River Alliance. Welcome, Grant.
Welcome, mayor, council members, thank you. I guess continuing the theme of amazing place, how we value it and how we protect it. Um, I gave a presentation of twenty slides when I was here in May. And, you know, it's been a few months. I'm happy to just very quickly go through those again. Uh, do we think that that's a good idea? Um, shaking your head, yes, so we can go ahead and do that. There it is, bingo. Um, okay, first slide. What we're gonna see is every form of possible impact, really, is what strip mining gives us. And they're highlighted here with the bullet. And there's a lot of waste, of course, and that's, uh, one aspect of impact is, is what happens with that waste, where it goes. Uh, this is actually a picture of the Glenbrook Mine, which is about, as the bird flies, around a hundred miles from here. And, um, it talks about the type of mining, these are surface deposits, uh, requires strip mining. And again, uh, a lot of waste from that. And of course, one of the principal reasons, uh, and the city's been so outstanding in recognizing this is water quality. Our drinking water is something we so value and we're so proud of. And some of the issues noted here in terms of metals leaching and acid mine drainage. And of course, metals contamination, it's metals that's, that are in that soil that is the reason that the area is mined. And in the case of Glenbrook, after the material was mined, it was then shipped to the Kus Bay area. And then there were additional. And then there were additional impacts there, um, as it was in that shipping process. And system failures is always a big part of some of the contamination and impacts. And this highlights, you know, whether it's pipeline failures, liner leaks, transportation accidents, you have all those opportunities for problems. And, uh, this is giving you an example of US copper mines and finding that over 90% of those mines all had problems with contamination. And again, you know, an underestimation of the water quality impacts. And this slide highlights some of those, very high percent, over 70 and 80%. Noting the additional contamination problems. And then how water flows off the sites, that's also changes because of, you know, that vast change in the surface of the land. And impacts to wildlife, sometimes this isn't as well understood, but of course you have habitat and then there's changes to the habitat areas. And this example here in Nevada, coming from their Department of Fish and Wildlife, uh, very, very significant impacts there. Again, this is the Glenbrook Mine, highlighting the Department of Environmental Quality there and the amount of contaminated metals and petroleum problem. And access, this is something that I personally have a lot of familiarity with as a result of my chairmanship of the Smith River Collaborative. And in our community, people extremely value access. And with a mining situation, once you have a mine in operation, you actually lose access. That mining company then controls the access. It's a big deal. Air quality impacts, as you would expect, um, you know, all that heavy moving of the soil and surface material. This gives some examples with the Glenbrook Mine and, um, some examples there. Energy costs, uh, now this of course occurs really where the processing occurs. And the processing may not occur in our area if there was to be the strip mining in the North Fork, but this just highlights that additional issue. And then overall, it's just pointing out here with this slide, how with our current 1872 mining law, when there are validated claims and you have mines, those mines then become the primary and most important activity on those lands. That's just the way it's set up and it, it actually makes sense when you think the 1872 mining law has been around a long time and we needed to get, uh, mineral development going in the early years. So this slide is really, um, a large reason why I'm here. A mineral withdrawal did occur in 2017. And it was ex, super well-supported throughout the bio region and Southern Oregon and Northern California. And, um, and it was done for 20 years. And it's pending legislation which would make it permanent. Now, this last slide, uh, basically is the map showing, you know, what those of us here in the room are particularly interested in. And that's the part of Oregon where the North Fork is, and that's the 58,000 acres. So, so you can see the line right through the middle of it and what's above that is the part that's in Oregon. So that's the conclusion of the PowerPoint. And I do have a one-page handout. And that one-page handout has the 2017, has the 2017 press release when that mineral withdrawal, uh, became, uh, the notice for it, for the 20-year mineral withdrawal. And if, and I'm going to let everybody have a chance to get that. So if you flip it to the side of the page that has the two emblems of BLM and the Forest Service. And if you look in paragraph two, that last sentence where it says, thank you. Where it says there in those last couple lines, for a period of 20 years, while Congress considers legislation to permanently withdraw those areas. The 20-year mineral withdrawal, as noticed with this piece, was passed, made legal. So it's in place. And it is pending legislation to make it permanent. The legislation, which the city has a draft letter to repeat their support for, is a really a primary reason why I'm here, is to see that we keep that legislation current. Another way of phrasing what's there that I just referred to in that press release is in aid of legislation. So this gets passed as a temporary mineral withdrawal for 20 years, but it's in aid of legislation. So we're going to see every year, hopefully Senators Wyden and Berkeley, it's their state, reintroduce the legislation and then this 20-year mineral withdrawal is kept active and it's in aid of legislation. Now, if you were to ask me, you know, what is the chance that the legislation could pass this year? I can honestly say, I don't know. Deals get made, people are working on things well beyond my knowledge. I do know Senators Wyden and Berkeley consider this very important. It was extremely well-supported, that, that 20-year mineral withdrawal. Lots and lots of very, very positive comments, you know, certainly from our community, but all around Southern Oregon, very few comments in opposition. So we just want to continue to let them know how important it is to our community. And again, I, I think thematically, it's continuing what we just heard about. We have a special area and we recognize that the Smith is special to it. Now, if you flip over that one-page handout, this is just a summary of what you just got in the PowerPoint. There is one thing that first facts. Homeland Nickel is a new entity since, oh, over the last maybe three, four years. They now have control over those unvalidated claims. And I just think it's important for you to actually read what's underlined in their corporate update. Based on the above analysis, we believe the Cleopatra to be one of the largest undeveloped nickel resources in the continental United States. That Cleopatra is all in the North Fork, okay? And so these other facts, obvious, you know, I just mentioned the other, uh, water purveyors, that's that fact. I highlight the third fact is just every type of impact there. And that EPA has confirmed that hard rock mining and strip mining is a type of hard rock mining is the largest source of toxic pollution in the United States. That's well documented. And those last two facts are also important. The second to the bottom, um, the current administration basically has asked to reassess these mineral withdrawals because there's great interest in restoring America's mineral dominance. So, you know, can those be undone? And this administration has said, you know, this is important to them. And then, uh, that last, last one is what we just talked about with the 2017, uh, 20-year mineral withdrawal. So I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, on any of this. And I also would like to thank council on really an excellent job in, um, putting together all the background where the city has been involved in this issue for a very long time. So thank you so much for how thorough that was. But I just defer to council or council members, Mayor, if you have any questions and otherwise.
Any questions from the council?
So, um, I do have a question and it's concerning fire suppression and fire, wildfire prevention in these areas. In the past, I don't know, 10, 15 years, we've had lots of issues with wildfires coming out of wild wilderness areas because it seems like those areas aren't as well, should I say, um, taken care of by the federal and, and state of Calif, federal government and state of California. Will this affect fire suppression in this area when, when it comes to the types of, um, the equipment that can be used in these areas, the types of drops from airplanes to suppress fires? I mean, it's, it's a big deal. Uh, we, we could have lost Gasky recently from our last fire. And, and that's something that I feel as a council, we need to weigh with, with this.
Oh, absolutely. I think it's an excellent question and it's an excellent opportunity for me to share in your concern on what needs to be a really high priority for all of us. I mean, we have over 82% public land in this county. And, um, I just want to say I'm Chair of the Smith River Collaborative. That's the two tribes, the county, the Fire Safety Council, timber industry, and who am I forgetting? There's four environmental groups. They have helped extremely the Forest Service in finding the funds to do the very wildfire preparedness that saved Gasky during the Smith River Complex fire. And, um, I gave a presentation to the Board of Supervisors. It was a year ago in March and that's on YouTube and I'd be happy to send that to you, which highlighted the number of projects that were done, but particularly around, uh, wildland urban interface communities. So spot-on question. And I can also say with confidence, because I work so closely with those other, uh, eight stakeholders and the US Forest Service, that this would have absolutely no bearing on that. This is really about not, i- i- if the, um, mineral withdrawal is made permanent, what it means is there is not the opportunity for new mining claims. Doesn't change anything about, hey, we need to have proper response to wildfire. And sometimes that proper response is an assessment and you let things burn. Now, what's very interesting, if I flip back to that map, there's nothing up there. My point is sometimes it's a money savings to have, to allow a fire to do what we would have to mechanically do if it was proximate to Gasky. And that is to mechanical treatment. So in the Calmeopsis Wilderness and in the other areas, uh, there's no private land. There's no grazing, there's no grazing allotments. It's very difficult country to get into, but it does have that, um, mineral concentration, which makes it attractive for a company to want to consider mining it. But in terms of the, um, fire and wildfire preparedness, that is really concentrated around a Gasky. You know, there's a certain distance that you need shaded fuel breaks, you need defensible space around homes. But out there, you know, you step back and you let your experts, your fire experts, deal with whatever fire comes. Does there need to be an intervention? Is there need to be a drop like you were saying in terms of water or fire retardant? Didn't we need to drop in a hotshot crew because it's going to move this way really fast? All those things are not interfered with at all. But spot-on question and issue and, and thank you for bringing that up.
Any other questions from the council?
I just wanted to make it clear with this 20-year mineral withdrawal, it is protected for now, correct?
It's good for.
Pending, pending any legislation that could come down the line is what you're saying.
Yeah, I would say really two things. It is true, this administration has particularly called out mineral withdrawals as something, hey, is there, can we, um, maybe undo some of them? So this administration has said that. So this maybe makes it a little more important for us. There's that point. And then the other point to your, to the way you asked your question, if the legislation, if and when the legislation is passed, it is then permanent. It's, it's a law and it's not 20 years, it's forever. And presently, our national recreation area has that. And that is why there's this legislation to expand the national recreation area. That does it too, to expand the national recreation area to pick up that 58,000 acres. Does that make sense?
It does. But you, would we lose the ability to go up there if they?
No.
Put that as a national recreation?
No, just like, you know, the national recreation area that we have, we still have access where we have access. It's not, it's not wilderness. It's a national recreation area. And, um, you know, there are roads up there and, and if you have the right type of rugged vehicle and you're willing to walk where, you know, brush is closed in a road, have at it, you know, you could do that. But it, it isn't, it isn't wilderness. It doesn't undo the existing Calmeopsis Wilderness, which is within the area. But it is, it is a different type of, uh, land designation than wilderness.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's what we have presently with our national recreation area.
I guess I have a question and, um, which is one thing I don't see mentioned. And again, that's hard always to forecast, but we have a long experience in the United States of, um, the taxpayer picking up the bill at the end for any kind of cleanups. And those are billions of dollars in California alone. So one of my things, I guess that makes me strongly, um, for us assigning this letter, having this letter is from a financial point of view, I don't, I don't, I just think we've learned this lesson over and over again. And I don't want to burden the future generations with yet another massive bill of cleanup caused by actually a private company. And, um, we can see that here in the Redwoods, millions of dollars going, billions and basically, no, maybe not billions, but millions going into restoration there. We can see that in the Everglades, et cetera. You can see it over in Reading, the Iron Mountain, on and on and on. So one of the reasons I want to be clear, I care a great deal about the, the long-term impacts on the environment, on salmon and our marine environment, on our water. I care about all that, but I want to point out to people, um, that we should also be looking at financially. Like what, what we do today is going to have a long-term impact financially on the future generations that live in this city. So that is important to me in the sense that, um, if the, if mines go in, it almost always, in my knowledge, to my knowledge, ends up being the US citizens to pick up the tab for the cleanup. And that's a very, very large tab.
Thank you so much for bringing that up. It would be a great addition to that PowerPoint because it's such an excellent point. And that of course is what the Superfund program is about, is, you know, working on and making reparations and remediation to contaminated sites post-mining. And maybe the companies bankrupt or they've left and some of the companies are not from this country. So that's an excellent point. Taking the, um, financial theme, I can add to it though and say, what we have heard in terms of the concentration of minerals in this area, in the Cleopatra Mine, is the concentration is low enough that presently the mine is only feasible if there's a subsidy. And what I'm saying is, and this was what Cal Nickel did in the 1980s. They went quite far along with the proposal for strip mining in the Gasky Mountain area. It was only viable with a subsidy. And that Glenbrook Mine example, that was a subsidized mine. So the concentration of minerals, while it's of interest, and I'm not ignoring what Homeland Nickel said in terms of, hey, one of the largest undeveloped nickel resources, but if you. in terms of, hey, one of the largest undeveloped nickel resources, but if you look worldwide, it's like multiply by 10 what that concentration is, and that's what it's mined at in other places in the world. Okay? So the, the case that you make to the US government is, hey, it's a critical metal. We should be mining it and stockpiling it because it might be insecure in future years. Well, that case didn't really hold water with the Cal Nickel Mine, but the financial part is such a good one to bring up. So hopefully people follow that too. It's just to, you know, have a subsidy on one side and then a cleanup at the other end. It's like double, double hit. So thank you very much. That was a great point. I appreciate it.
Any further questions from council? Thank you, Grant.
Mayor, I actually have one other just follow-up based on, on those comments, Grant. So do, do they have their mining claim then already established with the Cleopatra Mine?
They have what are called unvalidated claims. And the validation process is there's a legal aspect to it. There's a documentation that needs to occur with additional drilling and then, um, reviewing the contents of that drilling. And actually, it was, if you and I might recall, it was what, 10 years ago or so, where there was a proposal to do the additional drilling? You were the city engineer at the time, and that was kind of an alarm bell that went around the bio region about, whoa, okay, this is going on, what are we going to do about it? And that was a state process at the time. It wasn't federal. But so there, again, that unvalidation, there is a formal process that you go through, and they're not, they're not through that yet.
So this 20-year protection then will protect this area from being developed rather than applying for that exemption that exists with an existing mine. Correct?
It means during the 20-year period which we're in right now, no new claims can be filed. It does not erase. It does not erase the unvalidated claims. Okay? And at such time that the, uh, permanent goes through if there's legislation, that also does not erase the unvalidated claims. They still have to, um, prove their worth. It makes it harder. And also the additional protections that the state of Oregon has put in their agencies, since it's in Oregon. That helps. But does that ask, it is a little complicated, uh, but the key principle is unvalidated at this time, no new claims at this time, and then no new claims, um, even after permanency. Now, I will say as an example of that, after the national recreation area was passed in 1990, the claims that Cal Nickel had, eventually we heard about from that company, do you have any interest in buying them? And we were contacted by multiple entities. And we did an assessment of, you know, is that a worthwhile investment? And we decided, no, we felt that their chances of really, uh, perfecting those claims was too out there. And they were asking a ridiculous amount of money. So I think, you know, we're doing kind of the best that we can, when I say we, the big we, of protecting the area. But I hope, does that help?
Sure. Just also, you know, we need to be cautious then of what we experienced 10 years ago, right? If there is a company trying to take this next step, Cleopatra Mine, this legislation alone doesn't seem like it protects it from like Cleopatra. Am I correct?
That would be correct. I mean, they still, um, you know, have that opportunity to validate the claims. You know, there's a process where they work with the public agency. In this case, it's almost entirely the Forest Service, it's all Forest Service land. So there still is that process, but again, the state agency protections are very beneficial. Those two that exist.
Then this action that's before the council tonight, with this letter of support would be very similar to an action that the council took two years ago in 2022, I guess, three years.
Exactly. Yeah. And, um, I just wonder, uh, do you have any additional input on what I just said? Cause I respect your contributions as well.
No, I, I don't have anything different.
Yeah. It's complicated. These, these matters are complicated and it's easy for people to be confused. And particularly when you have, um, multiple processes over, you know, decades. So I'm grateful for the attention of staff and, and, you know, the city council on this. And, and as water purveyors, I think there is an extremely important role of how important it is to you. So I really very, very, very much appreciate your attention to it.
One other comment then, Grant, just as time has gone on, we have taken this to the council multiple times, including similar type of action requests a couple of years ago with a letter of support for, for really what's before you tonight. That's different than the outstanding national resource designation, correct?
That is absolutely correct. That's just, that's only a state process there. And that was through Oregon Department of Environmental Quality. That's just for the North Fork in Oregon. Outstanding Resource Water. Yeah.
Different process.
Completely different process. Exactly.
So as I understand it, you already have a letter of support from us. It's just an older letter. But are you pointing out that it's a different letter now that we're renewing or?
No, my point was basically it's very similar to the, to the letter that the council, uh, supported and the board of supervisors supported just a couple of years ago in 2022. There was a, a much broader discussion on it, on a different, uh, piece of legislation that would, would have a different designation. And that's that outstanding natural resource water, I think is what it was called.
Well, let me just, can I just pick up on, uh, what our city manager has just said? The city has previously provided a support letter for both of these pieces of legislation. That's separate than the outstanding resource water. It's for the exact piece of legislation. This is a renewal. This is, you know, few years have gone by. The legislation has a different num, the legislation has a different number. It gets reintroduced each Congress. That's.
Understood it as we were just giving you a more modern letter because the other one has grown old.
Exactly. It's, it's been reintroduced.
Reviewing our support that we've given.
Exactly. It's, it's, it's a, it's a new Congress. It's being reintroduced. And also at a time when the administration has said, ah, we're not so sure about these mineral withdrawals. You know, we like the idea of mineral dominance. Maybe we'd like to really accelerate our mining. So it's timely in that regard to show the support and that you're paying attention. But that is different than the outstanding resource water.
Any, any further questions?
Good discussion.
Yeah. Thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate it. Do we have any public comment on this matter?
Mayor Altman, I just want to let you know, we did receive written public comment that each of you have been provided with. It's been listed on the website and is also here for the public to read if they care to.
Thank you, city clerk.
I, I'm looking on the map. I'm trying to figure out where, so in, in this outlined area is in, in anywhere in this outline area is where they could be mining or is, is it just? I'm sorry, I, I have a map on my phone here that, that was included in the, uh,
Is that the map from the PowerPoint? Because the, so there, the, you know.
It goes, it shows, um, the river going down the center of it. And then it has all the red offshoots of the Smith River or of, of the area.
Councilmember Grino just showed me areas, that map is accompanies the legislation. And it shows the reaches of river that are, would be designated wild and scenic. So the legislation, not only is a permanent mineral withdrawal, it also includes another, I think 75 miles added to the National Wild and Scenic River System. So that's the map that, um, councilmember Grino just showed me. Now, I do have a map that I could show you of where the claims are. And in that fact sheet that I handed out, there's 28 acre, 2,800 acres of claims. And that's a smaller area than the 58,000 of the entire part of the North Fork that's in Oregon, if that makes sense. But, you know, they are, um, somewhat contiguous, but they're kind of in the core of that 58,000. And, um, I do have a file where I could show you a paper copy of that, but just understand that it's, that's 2,800 acres within the 58,000. That's the, that's the Cleopatra, uh, unvalidated claims.
But the, so, uh, I see that the wilderness area is also kind of overlapping this area. So the wilderness area is off limits completely, right? Or no?
Oh, mining can occur in wilderness.
Oh, it can.
Yes. That's why the 1872 mining laws, you know, really provides a lot of important access. Yeah.
Sorry, I'm just kind of trying to.
I know. There's a lot of, lot of layers to think about there. Do you want me to fish out that map showing where the actual claims are? I think, I do think I brought a copy of it.
I appreciate that.
Okay. And the other thing that I wanted to ask is I was given a letter by a former planning director, and he asked if I would read it during public comments, a short letter from, from Jeff Boyer. Should that be?
We received that.
Oh, you received it?
Yeah.
Oh, that's great. Um, let me look for that letter.
I'm, I'm sorry to keep asking more questions, guys. I just want to be clear on what we're looking at here.
Thank you.
Now, what I just gave, uh, councilmember Grino does not show as precisely as I would like just the claims. It does show the mineral withdrawal area, and it does show that that is outside of the designated wilderness. Now, uh, councilmember Grino, I do have that digitally that I could send you later where it just shows the claims. But it looks like what I brought is just, um, the showing of the withdrawal areas and.
So it's within that.
Yes, it's within that.
The lined out area.
Yes, that's right.
Anything further?
Huh?
Do you have anything further?
I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further public comment? All right. So if we are done with council discussion, uh, what are we looking for here? Uh, it looks like we need a motion.
I would like to move that we authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support for legislative efforts to protect the North Fork of the Smith River.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Grino?
Yes.
Councilmember Tinkler?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Altman?
Yes. Thank you very much. Moving on to new business now, uh, we have, uh, item number eight, which is Homeland Security Grant for Crest City Fire and Rescue Multi-Glass Monitor and Police Department Forensic Analysis Analyzer. We got a short, uh, staff report coming.
Thank you, Mayor Altman, members of the council. Yes, the, uh, Fire Chief, Chief Carey and our Police Chief, Chief Griffin have secured some additional grant funding. And with that, I'd like for, uh, Chief Carey and I am, uh, come in the, I'm in the back. I know he was actually just running on calls. He was texting me, not, uh, not sure if he'd be able to make it or not. But, uh, he can tell you what, uh, what he applied for and the new equipment that's coming to the fire department. And then Chief Griffin can just highlight, uh, some existing equipment that we have that'll have ongoing. Chief Carey.
Welcome, chief. Good evening, Mayor Altman and, and council. Um, this is a great opportunity to get a piece of equipment that is much needed. It's not something we use every single call and every day, but when we do pull it out, there's lives on the line. So, um, in conjunction with PD, um, and the Super Seven, as they're called, for the, the kind of gathering that votes on where the HSGP grant money is, is, uh, allocated. We had that opportunity to try to get a five gas multi-meter and monitor, uh, for hazmat atmospheres. And so we'll, we'll, uh, be able to monitor lower explosive limits, oxygen, CO2, carbon monoxide, and then sulfur dioxide, which is a lot of the sewer gas type stuff. And the cool thing about this, we're going to make it available to all the other fire districts to use. They can call us up, come get it, or we can get it out to them, and it's really going to serve the whole community. So we're very excited for that partnership. Christina Smith has been awesome in trying to get all of the, all the different entities together and try to service, you know, this grant towards all of them. So we're really excited to get this piece of equipment. And if you have any questions on the fire side of things, I can answer those.
Any questions from the council?
So the, the fire grant was actually not included in the budget. So the action before the night for the, for the council is to approve the, uh, the budget resolution amendment, and then the, uh, also to authorize me to sign the grant agreement within the grant agreement. So the, the budget's only for the fireside, actually did include the police department, 16,500 already in the budget. Like, we were anticipating that amount for ongoing support of the, of the unit. So that's why you don't see that part in the budget resolution, but the grant agreement has pulled it. And with that, I'd like Chief Griffin to talk a little bit about the, uh, the cell break.
You, city manager, Mr. Mayor, city council. What this does, continue our cyber program for our cyber crime unit that we stood up a couple of years ago. Really helps out in our ICAC or Internet Crimes Against Children cases, along with other cases. Just this past week, we had the sheriff's office come over with three phones in one of their homicide cases that we're helping them with the downloads of. And what it really does is makes us a local hub for forensics, uh, where we would normally have to send those phones out and maybe get them back in six months, maybe a year. Just depends. We're doing those on site now. Typically very fast turnaround, and, uh, the only time that we don't have a fast turnaround is when we have to wait for the update to come out from Celebrite to counteract the new update from Apple. But it kind of goes back and forth. Um, Apple's really good in consume, in consumer security. So just a little bit of a waiting game. But as I noted in the staff report, if you look at the agencies, we're helping out on a continual basis, public base visiting us. Sheriff's Office here, here, there was just a post today that I shared, um, with Sheriff Ford from Curry County thanking us for the help in forensics that we helped out with their recent case. We've helped out agencies, uh, even Homeland Security has come here and they've served a search warrant locally. And we were able to do a phone for them and they're really amazed, um, which led to a follow-up call from one of their managers for the West Coast, because I gave him a tour of the police department. And he was just kind of mystified what we had. And I think I've shown everyone here, but we call it the spaceship at, at our police department. Very proud of what we've done in just a few years with the support we have. And he wanted to follow up because he said, this is, you know, how'd you do this? What's going on? And so, um, other agencies, Curry County, Coos County, Jackson County, Josephine County, helped out Humboldt County, Yurok Tribe, you name it. We've helped out a lot of people, um, too. So much so, we could, we could, we could staff a full-time person just doing cell phone downloads, let alone the rest of the forensics that we've had. Getting this grant money allows us to go out and get OS forensics, which does the CPUs and everything. And then we have Data Pilot, which does the rest. Um, we're really well-rounded right now. I recently attended a conference in Dallas, which is the, um, National Crimes Against Children Conference. With the intention to going is you want to stay on the tip of the spear. Um, and I can confidently say we are on the tip of the spear in what we're doing specifically for small agencies, but it puts us against some of the larger agencies as well. Um, and the forensic capability that we have. So very proud of it. I'll stop talking, but that's what the 16,500 this year is going to go for. We did, um, in the later one that's going to be coming to you soon as well. I don't know soon, but maybe a few months. It, it's a little bit more of the money. It's going to be a lot. Hope, I don't know soon, but maybe a few months, it, it's a little bit more of the money, it's going to be allowed, allocated towards it. Um, because I asked for more in the following meeting that we had, so. I think that covers it. Does any questions or that, or?
I don't have any questions, but, uh, goes back to the latter Measure S funds. We would never have been able to have any of some of these, uh, advancements in our police department to, to better our community with, without that, so.
Glad you made that point, um, Mr. Grino, because that, it is offset this year, but that funding year was somebody from, at least six thousand from, uh, Measure S for that. And then next year, that's where I'm going to look at, I think it's next year. You know, getting more from the OES grant, and then we can look at using that money in different things for Measure S. And I'm also utilizing from, from funds from the AB one oh nine Community Corrections Budget as well. Because that's our only weak link right now is not having another certified operator for this. And it's about fifty six hundred to six thousand, I'm looking at right now for a week-long training. Um, that's the next step is having another person certified, so it would be more.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you for filling us in on all the good that's, that this, that that investment is bringing to our community and the region as a whole.
If you haven't seen it, please stop by. I'd love to show you what we're doing there and, uh, what I'm talking about in the spaceship, so. Thank you, Chief.
Do we have any public comment? On this item? Okay, no public comment or motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve and adopt Resolution twenty four dash thirty-nine, a resolution for the city council for the city of Crescent City, amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-five through twenty-six budget. I further move that we authorize the city manager to sign any grant documents related to the twenty twenty-four Homeland Security Grant for procurement of a, uh, multi-gas monitor to be utilized by the Crescent City Fire and Rescue, as well as subscription fees for Celebrite Forensic Analyzer for the Crescent City Police Department.
I would second that.
Clerk, please pull the vote.
Councilmember Grino?
Yes.
Councilmember Tinkler?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Altman?
Yes, thank you very much, everyone. Item number nine is creation of a new fund for twenty twenty-four CDBG award. City Manager, where?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Altman, members of the council. So yes, another, uh, another grant, uh, for the city, and this one really does help the community out a lot. And so this is CDBG grant and the, uh, total amount of one million, uh, one million eight hundred thousand, uh, three hundred thousand of which is going to the FRC for the, uh, for the food pantry. And then one point five million is going towards a business loan program. So that was a joint, uh, grant application between the city and the county, uh, which we, uh, we both applied to allow this to be open to all businesses within Delante County. Uh, we're working with a consultant, uh, called Community Development Services. And, uh, and they're going to be the ones implementing this program. But it will be for forgivable loans to businesses for job creation. And so we're hoping to, uh, to announce, uh, this funding source probably September, October-ish is probably when it'll be announced. Uh, and that'll be, uh, really pushed hard to the community to try to help our local businesses out, as well as the funding for the, uh, for the ongoing efforts of FRC. And again, great job by Bridget Lacy securing this grant. And, uh, and, you know, the city got the award, so it's, uh, should be needed, uh, shots in the arms for some local businesses.
Mayor, I have a question. Um, is this going to be a continuation of some of the, uh, other programs we've had in the past, or is this going to be a completely new program?
It's going to be similar, although some of those programs had some different parameters. So the last business loan program that you remember had a couple of different components. It had a micro enterprise component and then a business, uh, a business assistance, uh, component. Excuse me. Some of that had some of the, some of the COVID regulations with it, and so this doesn't have those anymore. This is going to be approximately about thirty-five thousand, if I remember correctly, per job created. And it's going to be directly, uh, related to job creation. But it is going to be similar in the fact that we're going to open it up towards businesses. Businesses will need to apply, so there'll be an application period. We'll then vet those applications to make sure they meet the program requirements of that job creation. And, uh, they have the proper financials and whatnot in place. Uh, and then we'll be able to hopefully proceed with, uh, with these loans. And as always, I always like to give a double check. Bridget Lacy is joining us, uh, online. And so, uh, so I want to see if her hand is raised, just in case, uh, she wants to add.
Okay.
No hands are raised, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. There it is. Okay, if the council's done with questions, we'll, uh, receive any public comment on this. Seeing no public comment. I would just say this is a great opportunity for local businesses, again, like the last one. And thank you very much to Bridget Lacy for being such a superstar. Okay, so we're looking for a motion.
All right, I'll make the motion to approve and adopt Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash forty, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, authorizing the creation of a new special revenue fund for the twenty-four CDBG one zero 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 four dash two one three award and associated projects.
I have a motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Clerk, please pull the vote.
Councilmember Grino?
Yes.
Councilmember Tinkler?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wright?
Yes.
And Mayor Altman?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We're now going to revisit item six that was pulled from the consent calendar. Uh, Building Inspector Interim. Turney Rice?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, this item is before you technically, uh, according to the law, we cannot put it on the consent calendar. Um, so we are putting it, um, up for full discussion. Um, this is because Mr. Dan Mingus is a CalPERS Retired Annuated. He has been assisting us as, um, in an extra help position for approximately the last year or so. Um, however, our permanent, um, Building Inspector slash code enforcement official, who Mr. Mingus was, um, helping, you know, onboard and train and assistance with our larger projects. He has resigned as he has taken another position with another agency. So at this point, we need to appoint Mr. Mingus to the same position with a different title. Um, so according to CalPERS regulations, a retired annuitant can either be extra help, and that means they're helping someone who's in that position, or they can be interim, which means that position is vacant. They're very particular about these rules, so, um, uh, today was Mr. Rosenthal's last official day at work. And so as of tomorrow, we need to appoint Mr. Mingus as the Building Inspector, uh, Retired Annuated Interim. So that is what these, um, resolutions will accomplish. Um, one is the resolution appointing Mr. Mingus, um, as the retired annuitate in the interim position and approving an amendment to that effect to his contract. Um, as well as the second resolution just updates our position control to also match that title. There's no budgetary change to, um, Mr. Mingus's position because he was already, um, scheduled for fiscal year twenty-six in the budget.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Okay. Thank you, city Turney Rice. Any public comment on this item? All right, I'm going to save some on the trouble reading. What we're looking for is a motion to approve and adopt Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, appointing Robert Mingus to the retired annuitant position of Building Inspector slash Code Enforcement Official dash interim. Also looking for a motion to approve and adopt Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six position control.
Salute.
You have a motion? We have a second?
Second.
Clerk, please pull the vote.
Councilmember Grino?
Yes.
Councilmember Tinkler?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Altman?
Yes.
Okay, moving along, do we have any reports, concerns, referrals, does the council like to report out on anything?
Um, I would just report as our representative on the, uh, Border Coast Regional Airport Authority. Uh, work is just about completed, uh, for the major runway that has been cut down for, uh, vast improvements. So we should be seeing that opening soon. Good news, and, um, I'll further view, there's a lot going on at the airport. And as far as other improvements needed and things, I'll continue to report on that, but I just wanted to let everyone know I'm uh, remaining very active and very interested in making sure our airport is a safe, uh, functioning place, and it's, things are looking up there. The other thing, only other thing I could say is, uh, I did also, uh, as part of my, um, requirements of being in the, uh, Chamber of Commerce, representing this, this group at the chamber, I attended the, um, Addy Meadum had a kind of a grand reopening, you might say. And, um, I was really, guess I would say luckily I had never been in Addy Meadum before, um, but I was, uh, very impressed. They gave us a tour of, um, all the updates they've done to their amenities. And the most important thing that astounded us all is they have new, uh, they're under new, um, you know, people who own it, new ownership. And, uh, they have worked really hard. They have actually reduced by greatly, I would say, close to almost half, uh, their, their costs. They have taken a really hard look at what the costs were and the fact in our demographics here. And were they actually serving our community? Um, and it was astounding to learn the extreme, uh, rate reduction that'll make it much, much, much more accessible to so many people that need it in our community. So that was a really positive thing to find out. Kind of unusual when things, when things go down in cost. Um, and then last but not least, I had a really good time going to the National Night Out. Uh, I had never been before because I don't have children, but I was kind of a kid. And I want to show appreciation to all the law enforcement, um, that were out there. And it was, I thought, a outstanding event. And I really want to express, uh, appreciation to Walmart, which donated not only the bounce houses, but a lot of, uh, bicycles and things. Kids were having a great time. You couldn't get kids off the bounce houses. And, uh, then I also want to, um, really express, um, appreciation to the people who own Seaquake, um, for donating all sorts of hamburgers and hot dogs and drinks and all the food. There was line going the whole time for that food, and I think it really helped make the event festive. So appreciate our local businesses helping out.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No?
I have one item, and, uh, with the council's agreement, uh, to have, um, staff place a matter of business on a future agenda. And what I envision is that would be, uh, staff report on the historical stipend for the council members. And, uh, how long it's been since that stipend has been looked at and increased? And then have the council look at it and make the decision whether or not that is a good decision or not. And that would be in agreement with you guys.
Do we have a consensus for that item?
I don't mind hearing a report on it, but I, I don't think I would be voting to increase.
I'll, I'll hear a report on it as well.
You too?
Thank you. Um, if there is nothing else from the council, we'll move on to legislative matters. Turney Rice, do you have anything?
No, not this evening.
City Manager?
All right, thank you, Mayor Altman, members of the council. So it has been a little bit since our last meeting. Um, and the, uh, one of the things that did occur right after our last meeting was we had a tsunami, uh, we had a tsunami warning here uh, in Crescent City and which, uh, ended up, uh, doing quite a bit of damage to the harbor, uh, as well as got the, our EOC activated and created quite a late night for, uh, for a lot of us, as well as a lot of our community members. So first want to commend the community for, uh, for really doing their part. And then also, uh, city staff from the Police Department, Fire Department. The one area that was evacuated was RRV Park, and staff did a wonderful job there with, uh, with our new director, as well as RRV Park Manager Victor Cordova, with the help of, uh, the Police Department. Uh, all things considered, I think it went well, and it serves as a good reminder to, uh, to us as a community, just uh, how, uh, susceptible we are to large earthquakes, really anywhere, uh, on the, uh, on the, uh, on the Pacific sort of west side, uh, whether it be, uh, Japan or Russia, Chile, or I mean, it all seems to funnel right towards us. And so good reminder for the community, have your go-bags ready. Uh, you never know when you're going to get that call and you're going to just need to go. Um, there was a lot of lessons learned. We're continuing to work with the, uh, with the National Weather Service and with, uh, with CalOES, um, in regard to the cellphone, uh, messages that went out. And so I know there's a lot going on on the state level to try to look at that, see what exactly the message is. And then, uh, and then try to always improve in every manner that we're faced. But overall, job well done, community. Also want to give a special thanks out to Senator McGuire, as well as Assemblyman, uh, Chris Rogers. Uh, but Senator McGuire was again instantly on the phone with, uh, with myself, with, say, Lopez, uh, throughout the night, and then we had the, uh, the press release once we actually had the information that we needed to, to try to get out the, to the community. So anyway, a big thank you to the community and, uh, everyone involved on, on that side of things. Another thing I will push is the, our downtown specific plan that's coming up. So that has been awarded to Cranwell Ramla, went through the council. They have completed their market analysis, so there'll be a report on that. But there will also be a public meeting to gather input from the public. That's going to be Thursday, September fourth. So mark your calendars, it's at five thirty at the Colts Center. We're, uh, we're hoping the community will come out and, uh, and really support that. Ahead of that, there will be a stakeholder, uh, meeting, and we're going to be meeting with the local business owners, and there'll be focus groups and all that. But the Thursday night meeting is for the public, and that's five thirty at the Colts Center.
And that's not, or is that, uh, only for people who live within the city limits, or it can be our greater community?
That is our greater community. That is anybody that wants to come out and, uh, really articulate their vision or hear, uh, from the consultant in regard to our downtown to making it a, a more vibrant, uh, business-friendly, uh, downtown. Because I think we all certainly see the potential in it, and our consultant sees the potential. We're fortunate, this consultant, this is all they do, is downtown master plans. And, you know, he was, I was talking with him the other day, and he's, he's, he has a lot of experience, let's just put it that way. Uh, and so he's, he's up there in age, and he said, look, I'm not doing this because I need a paycheck anymore. I'm doing this because I really like to see towns revitalized and see downtowns grow. And he says, not every downtown has that same potential. Some are, are just really, they're big challenges. But he says Crescent City, this is one that has the potential to grow. You have the, the national, uh, park right in your own backyard, you have the ocean, you have the Smith River. You have all of these components that should make this small town downtown absolutely wonderful and thriving. Said, but it's less about the art as it is about science. And so he says he's studied downtowns for decades, and he understands that science behind it with walking distance and key marketplaces and all those types of things that can really make it great. And so that's really what this is about. It's taking that experience, hearing the ideas of our local, and then really taking that next step towards downtown. Capitalizing on the beachfront park and Front Street and all those improvements that we've made. And, and really, you know, taking that, that turning point step to this community seems like it's always just been right on the edge, right? But now we just have to push it over, and let's get our downtown the way we all, uh, the way we all know it can be and live up to that potential. September fourth, five thirty is the first public meeting on that, gathering input. He's going to go take that input with the market analysis, then there'll be another, uh, another community meeting. In the end, the big goal on this is it's not just going to be another plan that sits on a shelf. He's going to give us three to five projects that can be implemented in the next three to five years. So that is, that is his promise to us. So mark your calendars on that one. And then last but not least, we are recruiting, and so we have, uh, we have at least four, uh, positions that are out right now, or will be out in the next couple of days. So HR manager, uh, is, uh, is out, and we're certainly, uh, looking for anyone qualified in that position. Building official, uh, you just heard from City Attorney Rice on that, so we're certainly looking for a building official. We have project engineering manager that will be out soon, so that's on the public works side of things, implementing some of these great projects we're talking about. And then public works, uh, maintenance worker as well, focusing in on the water and sewer, uh, utilities. So that is my update. But I do have, uh, I do have Director Jaeger that's going to tell you all about the construction projects that are, that's what's going on. Is that what you guys were? And we have police officer and police. And we have police officer and police officer recruit. I apologize on that one. That one is, is always a need, it seems like, but actually it's, it's the one, I think we only have one position. So that's pretty amazing.
And where's the September 4th meeting?
Colts Center.
Colts Center.
So there will be construction right by the Colts, Colts Center and Director Jaeger is going to talk to you about that, but the Colts Center will be open.
Director Jaeger, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nice to see you all again. So real quick, just so you kind of know what's going on in the town and how, you know, sometimes we talk about things and it's actually happening now. So there is some construction going on in town. This is one of our better budgets, shall we say, in terms of bang for the buck scenarios. This is the H SIP project. State grant we received basically deals with getting kids around schools and that was how the grant was submitted. We took all the design money and incorporated it with the project for doing the work. And so we basically, we're receiving $225,000 from the state. We've been handling the design and engineering in-house. So all that money is going towards the work. The city's match was 25%. We've allocated 40,000 for Measure S. Speaking of Measure S, again, speaking up the additional matching funds as well as some contingency money. Real quick through this, like I said, schools, the majority of the work is actually around Joe Hamilton and Crest Elk. And additionally, there is some work on Fifth Street, Fifth and A, Fourth and A. Some of the work shown by Peters Park was picked up earlier this year through another project. So that's kind of the gist of it. Just a real quick rundown of what fours and afters. And the reason we're doing this. Let's see, this is Joe Hamilton and you can see with the pictures, the two pictures on the left. We've got crosswalks to curbs. And we have more crosswalks to curbs. And actually, excuse me, this is Crest Elk. I'm sorry. This is Crest Elk. By the back parking lot. And so what we've got there is we've taken out the curb and the sidewalk and we've made a legal legitimate ADA accessible ramp on either side of the street. So on the left, you've got the corner closest to you. On the farther side, you have the other one. And anyway, so no, that's that location. This is across from Joe Hamilton. On the south side of the street across Joe Hamilton, there was just a bench of tree roots there. It was not a walking path at all. Once again, we've taken two crosswalks that went to curbs and have made them ADA compliant. And on the top picture on the upper left is the before, and obviously the picture to the right is the after. And you can see there's just no way that anyone could even hardly walk that corner, let alone get a bicycle or ADA ramp, what have you. So that's another location of Joe Hamilton. This is Joe Hamilton again. So once again, we've done some infill work as well. So you can see this is by the, the doctor's offices over there. And we've actually infilled the sidewalk because we have sections of sidewalk that was done by some prior development to the south of this location. But there is a gap between the existing sidewalk on either side of this corner. So we fixed that. And then we've also taken the sidewalk across a ramp with the other side. So we know, so basically we're going from the miserable or non-existent situation to a situation where people could actually walk. And not only ADA compliant, but also for easy bikes and safer kids to get to school. This is a few shots. This is a little bit of the infill. This is the other, on the right, that's the other corner. But we looked at it a second ago. That's running, that's running down E Street. E Street. Okay. That's running on E Street. So we infilled the sidewalk there. We went around the corner. We infilled by the doctor's offices. Then we also proceeded all the way down the street on 10th Street to get that area where the tree roots were. This is a ramp at Crest Elk on the other side. And then also just even replacing the broken valley gutter. You know, you've got kids walking down the street. This intersection has two ADA ramps on both sides of Crest Elk that were curbs. And so we're actually going to eliminate the northern crossing. Just, you know, we send people down ADA ramp, get to the other side of the street and have a curb. So we're going to eliminate this crossing and send everybody south where they can cross properly. So that's the H SIP project. There's, we've let's see, they're going to pour again. I think it's Thursday or Friday this week and they're the same pour crews up in Brookings. So we'll be down here to finish this. We'll get all the work by the school. In fact, I think it's only about half of, I think those two little triangles are the only that's left in the school zone. The other project, portion of the project, which you'll see torn up on A Street is going to be put down either this week or next week. So by the end of next week, this project will be complete. Rolling onto pool roof. So that's the H SIP grant, pool roof. Real quick update. Today is day one of the pool closure. We anticipated, I think about 60% of the sheeting being, needing to be replaced. We got up there and the first report I got about eight 15 this morning is the sheeting is cardboard. So the very top of the roof, it was literally paper thin. If you look at the picture on the right, you can see the two by fours or probably two by sixes that are holding up the sheeting. On the second row in, you can see a bunch of two by fours that have been cut or two by sixes. They're having to scissor those. Because there's not enough wood there to support them. So scissoring means that it's the, the two by sixes themselves are failing. Can't support the two by, or the sheet of plywood. So we are actually going in there and having to put new wood along the old wood at the top. That's the side facing the creek, which should be the worst of the two sides. The side to the left there appears to be better. But we're anticipating there's a bunch of penetrations on that side. A skylight's inventing because that's where the mechanical room is and there's been water coming in there. And so that is where we have the sag in the attic over the locker room area. And so based on what we're seeing here, we're anticipating some damage there as well. So we're probably at or maybe under the sheeting replacement quantity that was anticipated. But we do have some additional structural repairs, many of the two by fours. But I think all in all, we're still under a contingency budget based on where we're at with this project. We had a 16 day shutdown starting, I guess, Saturday night. They're thinking it'll take them 10 to 12 days. We're still on that boat. So we're still hoping to take advantage of, of their, their speediness. And also we're taking advantage of some, making other repairs within the pool. We're draining part of the pool so we can fix a, a crack that was fixed when the pool was empty last time and little fingers. I probably kids or teenagers have poked our cock in.
You're going to drain it again?
The pool is not completely drained. We're draining it just so we can get at the seam in the middle of the pool. So we're basically draining about half of the pool. So, but that will give us time to yeah, fix for the little fingers that pushed it in. We use as a backing, we're going to re-cock the, the seam in the pool. And that'll give it seven days of cure time. So we've drained the pool today. We'll fix that tomorrow. We'll give it seven days to cure. We're also doing a little bit of now, I don't call fancy work, but the, we're painting the tiles or installing tiles. I guess we're actually installing tiles or painting on tiles for numbering the depth of the pool. So there are about three or four things we're going to take care of the pool while it's not being occupied again. So that's going along nicely. So that's day one of that. Just something else that was budgeted last year. We got a budget from the council to do some stain the water treatment plant. So we took that money and I think we've seen it utilized very nicely. F X has been our contractor for this work and I just really appreciate, he actually has a grandfather, probably worked with Gil. So he takes, he's actually in the, his grandfather's in the picture with, you know, the, the black and white of the 50 people that were used to work for the city. But anyway, Adam takes a lot, with F X takes a lot of pride in this. He's actually applied instead of just doing a stain coat on the treatment center. He's put two to four coats. There've been four coats placed on the side that face the weather. So the lab looks nice and that's under budget to the point where we're going to spend the rest of this year's budget on doing the exterior of the entire fence on the treatment plan. So from a visible standpoint and from weather exposure, this building and the outside of the fence have been protected. We were going to take a peek at one of the shots at one of the buildings. But we've concluded that some of the siding is beyond. We're not going to throw the money away in that. We may be back with you next year to, once we get a sewer rate adjustment to look at, do some more work in through your plan. But anyway, want to let you know that that's happening. This project, and I could have brought a prettier slide, but I like my Crayola drawings. This was a project that was brought before you as first through Measure S committee as our, we've got three basically major, major projects, paving project established this fall, next spring and the, the following fall. This was the one set up for this fall, which would be the project number one. The areas in blue were actually picked off by staff ahead of time, but we had some extra budget in the 2425 budget. And we had an opportunity with tide water, for example, paving Pebble Beach for a couple hours. So we utilized their mobilization, their crew and, and picked off all my Dutch brothers, same scenario essentially for the left side blue. So that was taken out of the project. So in doing so and keeping our budget and trying to bang through these things best we can. The three yellow lines you see there were streets that were scheduled for next, the next round. And so we've actually moved them up. And so more we knock off sooner with budgets, the more we get done. And so we've basically those three red areas that are circled in blue are off the plan, been done. And so the yellow areas you see there are in this project and it actually got placed in the triplicate today. And as soon as we get Mrs. Rice's blessing on the project documents, we will get it in the exchanges and that is set for a bid date of September 10th for this Measure S project.
So Eighth Street is not included in this?
Eighth Street?
Eighth Street?
Yeah, Eighth Street is included.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. So all the red that's there in red that's been circled has been done. The red that's still there is still going to happen.
Excellent.
So we're doing, so this project had three and a half blocks of Eighth Street on this round. And then another, I don't know, three or four blocks next go around. So we are knocking off three, the worst three and a half blocks of Eighth Street.
That's good to hear because Eighth Street.
Eighth is horrible. If we improve it too much, we may be back before you putting a stop sign because people already do drive that way and now the speed bumps will be gone. So but that's tomorrow's problem. But anyway, so good news on that front, 56,000 feet of asphalt repair. Let's see what else Dave's got here. I did want to mention that we also purchased our pickup truck that was allocated by the council. So we now have that. We received that last week. So on that note, I did want to thank Bill Huffman, our mechanic for helping me with that purchase. I want to thank Cliff Van Hook for the roof at the pool. And wanted to thank Andrew Layton for working with this project here. I can't do all this by myself. Their, their help is appreciated. And that is it. Any questions?
Any questions?
Can we talk about the trail?
Thank you, Director.
So we have, the trailer project has begun. That's the new subject, but the trail project has begun. It has been surveyed. And we're working out the last of, I guess, the environmental documents is probably the safest way to put it. So the contractors on board. We are scheduled to meet the deadlines and grand openings that require to get the nodes and some of the other nice things installed on the trail. So the trail project is ongoing. And the other thing you might also be brought to your attention is we had, we've been fighting a failure at 10th and A, which is by the letter Saints, Latter Day Saints Church. It turns out the whole sidewalk has failed. And so we're going to be, there'll be some activity over there as well. We are aware of it. It's going to take a bit to get it done and we'll have to reassess some budgets to get that work done. But we've had a major, we're not sure exactly what yet, but we're digging that up next couple of weeks and getting that fixed as well. That's what we're doing.
Good job.
And also, well, we haven't mentioned first tend to love to write a script. And then we did receive real good bids on Front Street and K Street. So we are will bring to you, hoping to bring it to you this meeting, but by the next meeting, we will have a staff report authorizing or requesting you to authorize the city manager to sign the contract with tide water contractors. We did get two bids. We are within budget. The confusion, we'll clarify next time at much greater length to confuse you more or clarify, your choice. But in addition to these, we have the C V G grant. We have the Prop 68 grant. We have the Clean California grant. All those are going to pay play a part in this grant, but we still have the deliverables that are not being budgeted. So we're very conscious of what this project's costing and how we're going to get there. That we do have enough grant money, especially in the Clean California side to complete all the deliverables that were authorized in that grant. We'll explain that for the next time, but that project is going to happen. There will be some work done this year.
I'm sorry, Mayor, but I have to say I'm ecstatic to hear that, that status of all these projects for maintaining our streets happening right now, this year, not next year, not two years down the road, this year we're doing this. Yeah, I'm excited.
To the front street, more than, I still need to have that discussion with the contractors to what their plan is. Obviously with the late start. You know, the area in front of the Colts Center opening that can of worms dirt wise, this late in the year is not good. Same thing with the storm brain. It's going to take a month. We tried to buy the, we tried to pre-purchase the concrete, pre-cast boxes twice that we failed at that. So we get the contractor started. So what they're going to get done this year by letting out the project that came to you recently, the Towah Trail project. Part of that project due to the way it was bid is also included in this project that was let out. And so our intention is to get all the trail area prepped, paid partly, or some of the concrete work will be paid through the Towah Trail project. Grant funding is going to pay for the, the niceties on that project. And then the remaining concrete sections that we're not, are not being paid for the Towah Trail project will be paid for with this project. So we'll get the irrigation sleeves in, the electrical in through another pay source. Prop 68's going to pay for the canoe note, but the gist of it is we will hopefully by November 1st have be open for our ribbon cutting. I've got the golden shovel set. We've got the fancy scissors set, but we'll get you out there and I think the, if we get all that work done, the trail done. And then we're ready to jump on next spring. So it's the last two blocks of Front Street. Played L and then the first block of K Street. Plus the utility associated with that. Should look very nice.
Great.
Other than that, I don't really know what Dave's doing all day long.
Lots and lots of solitaire. The computer game.
I wanted to make one comment. I forgot, I wanted to compliment the city and all its workers on the safety record. And I joined the safety, city safety potluck, which was, by the way, I've discovered the city employees are really good cooks. I highly recommend attending their, their potlucks, but more, more importantly, I was very impressed after decades of working for federal government where safety is also extremely high priority, the number one priority is really exciting to me to see that it's the number one priority at, for our city too, that we don't just do the work, we do it safely. And I really personally enjoyed seeing the enthusiasm of the, the maintenance staff there and how involved they were in the whole creating of the event. And I don't know, I, I don't think every, I, this is the only city I've ever worked with, but I, I think it's pretty special that, that's such an important emphasis on that. So I appreciate it.
So, so two things real quick. Taylor Patch did a mic drop and ran out of the room as fast as he could, but I wanted to actually thank him at the event. So thank you, Taylor Patch for organizing and, and doing a bang up job, first time emceeing. He's not Mr. Weir's caliber of a game show host yet, but we're going to, we'll work on him. And then secondly, the, to your point is, is I was, the most amazing statistic to me was the comment that was made that we have this safety culture group where we make, they do all these inspections. And there was not a single, I don't know what level they are, but it was not a single issue that not had, had not been corrected. So that's impressive. When I first came here, even with the first six months, it was a long, long list of of stuff. And the fact that they're not only finding them, but making them, making corrections is, is a to both the safety culture group and public works and others and P D and everybody else for following through with these things. Get them taken care of. Thank you.
I do appreciate you bringing that up as well. And it was good to see GSR May actually comes down and attends those events as well. So they're paying attention to what we're doing. I think it pays a big, a big role in their assessment of organization year in and year out. And then also us receiving that the full accreditation that we have for the past. I think we're at the past seven years now, straight with a full accreditation, which means that, or this year it meant anyway, that we got $75,000 back towards the city because of that. And it's people like Taylor Patch and like, you know, Dave Jaeger and the, you know, the Lori and Ernie Silva, who are the RV Park hosts that actually received an award this year for their efforts in regard to safety and applying an AED to a city. So a good reminder, and I certainly appreciate the acknowledgement and all the employees for everything.
Great. Thank you, Director Jaeger. Okay. And there's not anything else to cover tonight. I would like to adjourn the meeting. Were you going to say something, chief?
I'll say thank them for the construction, also the police department as well. I can add that. I wasn't going to, but thank you. There's a lot going on. If you haven't driven by the police department, they've done the curb there in the back gate and inside as well. So that's all.
Yeah, we're in, in conversations with USDA as well in regard to the police department and funding the larger capital project. But there are a couple of small projects that we talked to the council about in the past as far as picking off early. And that's some of the gate improvements. And then there's some small interior improvements to the P D. Of course, we're looking at rearranging some offices to make it more efficient. So I T staff and carpentry crew and whatnot have been working with the chief to get some of those.
And the spaceship?
They haven't touched the spaceship, but they've been rock stars, the whole group. So I appreciate them very much.
All right. Anything else? Anyone else? Okay. So this is important that I don't mess this up. We're going to adjourn to August 21st. Which is I believe this Thursday? Yeah, this Thursday at the wastewater treatment plant, we have a special council meeting at 5:30. Thank you, everybody.